All right. Roll call, please.
Gibson?
Here.
Kapler?
Here.
Ormsby?
Here.
Satterfield?
Skae?
Here.
Stoltenberg?
Here.
Wenland?
Here.
All right.
In the green room.
The minutes?
Mr. Chairman, I'll move for approval of the minutes from the March nineteenth meeting as submitted.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
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 All those same sign, motion carries. All right. So this is the Plan and Zoning Commission. We're a seven-member commission appointed by the mayor and confirmed by the city council. The commission is a recommending body only, with the city council making all final decisions. Our regular meetings are held here, the third Wednesday of each month at five thirty. Special meetings, we have special times. We cover rezoning requests, preliminary plats, final plats, site development, landscape plans, and plan unit development plans. All right, with that.
Thank you, Chair.
I think we're ready to go.
All right. First two cases will be presented together. A request to rezone twenty-five sixteen is a request to rezone property from A one to R three and twenty-five seventeen, property from A one to C three. This is property that was recently annexed into the city of Bettendorf. The applicants are Windmill Development, Pleasant Valley Community School District, and Forest Grove Schoolhouse Preservation. So a majority of this property is, wasn't, is, was part of that annexation. There is property that was already in the city, so all parcels are outlined. About ninety-three acres is going, is proposed to be R two. That would be compatible with single-family subdivision, an existing historic structure, which is the schoolhouse, and a future proposed Pleasant Valley Community School building. And then sixteen acres, C three, that's north of the creek. And as the concept for the rezoning, the annexation proposes indoor storage. And that, we'll review that a little later.
And just, sorry, just jumping real quick, I think when Taylor was starting his slide, he may have said R three, he meant R two.
R two zoning.
R two, for the, for the case there was a misunderstanding there, it was R two.
R two, single-family district. The future land use map was, does designate this area as a mixture of community commercial, CC, neighborhood light, public and civic, or public semi-public, and greenways and open space. The comprehensive plan update, as you remember, was conducted last year and was done with this annexation going through the process. So this was contemplated and per, almost perfectly aligned with the proposed rezoning and subsequent preliminary plat, which we'll review in a later case. The current zoning is A one. Per code, all annexed territory into the city is automatically zoned to A one, our most restrictive zoning district. And then at the request of the applicant owner, zoned to a different district after approval of recommendation by P and Z and approved by council. The proposed zoning is shown here, so really, just south of the creek is R two and north of the creek, C three. It's the C three portion, so case, another later case, twenty-five eighteen, proposes amending the permitted use table for C three to allow indoor storage in the C three district with a special use permit. That is the proposed use has been for that. We've talked a little bit about that in our zoning code update, but this is gonna kind of come before that, so that's what that case is about. The zoning and uses are compatible and consistent with the comprehensive plan pending that ordinance case. The rezoning concept, the submitted concept plan shows the proposed uses and configuration in the area. The concept has remained unchanged throughout the annexation process, so twenty-twenty-three until now. Proposed uses, as I mentioned, are compatible with the adjacent development. There's a single-family subdivision to the west, single-family developments to the east, east of Wells Ferry Road in the county. And then to the south is still undeveloped land right now, but the future school and the current schoolhouse are compatible with those uses. I'll go into further into the preliminary plat and I'll analyze the subdivision further. Rezoning requests must adequately address concerns outlined in eleven fifteen thirteen B. Staff have addressed each requirement in the submitted staff report and contend the request sufficiently addresses each topic. Staff contends the proposed rezoning request meets city standards, code requirements, and as, and is consistent with the comprehensive plan. Staff thus recommends approval of the following: Case twenty-five sixteen, rezone a property from A one to R two, and Case twenty-five seventeen, rezone a property from A one to C three, and I can take any questions.
Thank you. This one is a little bit different because this is a public hearing, so we'll go through that process. First, Lisa, is there proof of publication for Case twenty-five dash zero-one-six and zero-one-seven?
Yes, there is.
Okay, great. All right, with that, we will open the public hearing for Case twenty-five dash zero-one-six. Anyone out there wish to speak on this? All right. We'll close the public hearing on that, and now we'll open the public hearing on twenty-five dash zero. Let's just.
Are you gonna do that? You're gonna do that?
Yeah.
Okay, all right.
Is that okay?
That's fine, yeah. As long as... So we're gonna do, we're gonna have separate motions for each, for each one, but we're gonna do the public hearings first? Okay, that's fine.
Okay. All right, so we're gonna open the public hearing on Case twenty-five dash zero-one-seven. Anyone wish to speak on that? All right, close the public hearing on that. And now we're gonna go ahead and have any discussions with the commission? Anyone have any questions on this?
Maybe, if I could, Mr. Chairman, just to kind of reorient you with this case. Remember, this is a, an annexation, so this is the, the probably thirty years as we've annexed any significant portion of the city, so that's all been done. That's gone through this body, through city council, and approved by the state, so the annexation is done. Just a reminder, when things are annexed, they, they go into A one as a holding category. So that's why it starts at A one, that's where anything we annex in starts. And then it's appropriate to rezone it and plat it, as is brought for you tonight. So the A one isn't really a condition, it's just kind of where you start. Everything has to start somewhere, everything starts at A one, and then, you know, you rezone as appropriate. So that's what's before you.
Thank you for summarizing that for us and the public. All right, yes?
Taylor, on Slide six, in the commercial community space, it has a notation of RV storage. And later on, it talks about personal type storage. I support both, I think it's a physically excellent location for that type of application. But I was curious, is it gonna be one or the other, or both type of storage?
From our current, so we're undergoing a zoning code update right now, so our uses are evolving. But our, as our current code stands, what convenient storage is, is indoor storage for personal uses. What we actually define as RV storage would be outdoor type of storage, so they're kind of different, different definitions. What they're contemplating is, evidence with the, I think you can see the square blocks, is indoor storage, so nothing's gonna be shown.
Okay, so RV would actually be an inside ability?
Even if it's an RV indoor, it's still, yeah, yep.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, Roy, did you have any questions or comments?
No, maybe just a quick one, yes, maybe a quick one for Brent. We're approaching, when you're on Wells Ferry there, the underpass with eighty and everything. Are we okay with the visibility for the turn-in for that commercial storage area there? We've got plenty of visibility with the grade differences in underpass and everything.
Yeah, that's a good question. There, there is a little bit of limited sight as you're heading, as you're looking north. That's currently just because of a berm that's there, so once we actually get to site plan, we will evaluate that and they'll most likely have to cut that down just a hair. But there's been a lot of tree clearing, mostly from our project with the sewer lift station as you're heading south, between that and the, the bridge construction. So that is clear, the north we can take care of when we get to site plan, though.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, no further comments? All right.
Ready for a motion?
We're ready for a motion, we'll have to take them separately.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, I'll move for approval of Case twenty-five dash zero-one-six, subject to staff recommendations.
Second.
Thank you, and roll call, agree?
Gibson?
Yes.
Kapler?
Yes.
Ormsby?
Yes.
Skae?
Yes.
Stoltenberg?
Yes.
Wenland?
Yes.
Motion carries?
Next motion would be for Case number twenty-five dash zero-one-seven, subject to staff recommendations.
Roy also said that.
Thank you. Ready, Lisa?
Gibson?
Yes.
Kapler?
Yes.
Ormsby?
Yes.
Skae?
Yes.
Stoltenberg?
Yes.
Wenland?
Yes.
All right, that motion carries. Okay, Taylor, we're on to the next one.
So we will go to number, our twenty-five eighteen, which is our number six on our agenda. So Case twenty-five eighteen is a proposed zoning text amendment to the permitted use table. A little bit of background here. Staff is proposing to amend Section four permitted use tables for the following purposes: to allow convenience storage in the C three district, subject to approval of a special use permit by the Board of Adjustment. So you, with our permitted use table, you have permitted uses, non-permitted uses, which are just blank, or special permitted uses, which are all subject to the, our special use process. Right now, convenience storage is only allowed in our industrial districts. Staff has received much comment from developer community, business owners, that there is demand for convenience storage. And these are mostly gonna be smaller storage, not your warehousing storage. So for personal effects, as I mentioned earlier, hobby shops, et cetera, or personal goods. This would allow, on a case-by-case basis, commercial infill in certain cases where they wouldn't require a rezone of property to industrial, which could open up a lot of different uses that aren't intended for maybe an adjacent commercial subdivision, commercial, residential subdivision. So it would be very specific use, there would have to be, you know, a case-by-case analysis of that. As shown, this is the permitted use table for that convenience storage and the proposed amendment, and those are the permits, just permitted industrial right now. I mentioned the first point, the warehouse, that this indoor mini-warehousing can be compatible in certain cases. Staff is not endorsing the use where there's potential for commercial uses which provide, you know, jobs, services, or more intensive commercial uses based on the criteria such as traffic or connectivity and overall development factors. So we're not endorsing a, you know, storage on our main arterials or areas where there should, there could be high trip counts, et cetera. And it's, given the criteria stated, a requirement for a special use permit by the Board of Adjustment is recommended for a case-by-case analysis for permitting convenient storage in the C three district. Staff contends proposed amendments enhance the city of Bettendorf's economic development tools and encourage redevelopment, reinvested, the reinvestment in the commercial areas, all goals outlined in the city's comprehensive plan. Staff recommends approval of Case twenty-five eighteen, zoning ordinance amendments to Section eleven-four-five B. I can take any questions.
Great, thank you. Lisa, has there been proof of publication?
Yes, there is.
Great, all right. We're gonna open the public hearing in Case two-five dash zero-one-eight. Does anyone in the public have any comments or questions? All right, we'll close the public comment area. All right, anyone on the staff or commission have any questions?
I do have a question. Taylor, if somebody wants convenience storage in a C three district, they have to go through an approval process of a special use permit. Is there a criteria for that?
There is, those are outlined in our Board of Adjustment. Right now, it's, I should say, we confuse it with the proposed code and current code. Current code outlines those criteria, a lot, I shouldn't say a lot, like, but similar to our rezonings, which have a nine-step, I believe it's seven, for our special use permits.
Okay.
And this is currently used for, well, we should be familiar where some of those cases are gas stations over a certain amount of pumps. We have, that's our most recent one I can think of. We have different uses in less intensive districts. So it's a very familiar process.
Okay.
Yeah.
We, like, a good example is outdoor patios with alcohol.
We do those a lot.
That's when we, we wanna kind of control where those go.
We used to do, drive-through windows every month.
All bars, all bars are currently for our special use.
The same process, Board of Adjustment, has to happen. And then, of course, there's a site plan and all the other things that we always do as well.
And that analysis is usually, is gonna require at least a advanced concept or pretty much near a site plan to make the determination of, you know, those impacts. And you're looking at external impacts of the use. In this case, it's more of a, there is external impacts, but it's really the use of, is it the right place? So it's a very, it's a little different analysis. But that would be then have a public hearing with the Board of Adjustment, notification. It's very similar to our zoning. And then, any site plan would still be required to come through the Plan and Zoning Commission and City Council.
Mr. Chairman, if I could just make a bit of an editorial comment. One of the things we're seeing with our code, and this is a great lead-in into our zoning ordinance chapter review tonight, so this is just perfect. I know you're so excited. But when we have changing uses, and so we have developers asking us for this use, and we keep telling them they have to go to industrial areas to do it. That's not the way society works anymore. People don't want to travel to industrial areas for their storage unit, they want them to be closer to their homes. That's the way the market is. And so developers are telling us, we're taking that input. We were contemplating this already as part of our zoning code update. And then I would also posit that if we put this growing use in our industrial areas, then when I have a true industrial project show up, I may not have room for it in that true industrial area because I've used, what I would say we'd all agree, storage is a little, much less intense than an, than an industry, right? But now I've taken that off the map, and I don't have a place to put that. So, you know, if I could editorialize a little bit, that's why I think this makes sense.
Thank you.
Makes sense.
Hey, Mark, it's Roy, just another, to bootstrap on that, I completely agree with the philosophy. Let's keep the intense dirt for intense uses, and if we've got places we can put it, but I might suggest any way we can help soften the blow in more lively areas with landscaping or screening or other things, because a bunch of garage doors are not the best-looking thing in America. But any way that we can enhance, okay, it's special use, we let it in to a C three, and it comes with a little bit extra landscaping requiring to make it look pretty good and fit the neighborhood.
Yes, sir, I think that's great comments, and we can make notes of that for our more formal chapter, our zoning code update going forward.
Great.
Yep.
Thanks, Roy. Any other questions or comments? All right, we need a motion then.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve Case number two-five dash zero-one-eight, subject to any staff recommendations.
I'll second.
Okay, and we roll call, Lisa?
Gibson?
Yes.
Kapler?
Yes.
Ormsby?
Yes.
Skae?
Here.
Stoltenberg?
Yes.
Excuse me.
Yes.
Wenland?
Yes.
All right, that motion carries. All right, on to the preliminary print.
Moving along.
Thank you.
All right. Public hearings are done, so moving on to, we have two preliminary plats. We'll go with, this is the Blackstone addition, twenty, Case twenty-five dash zero-one-nine. So this is the preliminary plat, so really the concept plat. Approval of this at council just gives permission to go back and get a final plat. And that would be, have to wait till it's rezoned. But this is for the recently annexed territory. Windmill Development is the applicant, it's a eighty-five lot residential, s, s, single-family residential subdivision. As mentioned, property in this plat would be, is considered to be rezoned R two and C three. Future land use, we just went over, but it's a mixture. The plat aligns almost perfectly with our future land use map, given our consideration of this long ago. And then the proposed zoning is R two. The lot, there's one lot reserved for that commercial development in the C three area, noted as Lot fifty-one. So that's, that would come on at a later time through either future plating and/or a site plan review. Looking at the plat itself, the preliminary plat, it's in two pages since it's such a large area. So the south half shown, all the lots meet the minimum bulk standards of the R two district. So they're sized for some larger single-family homes. Access to the subdivision's local roads and cul-de-sacs are from two road connections onto Wells Ferry Road and Forest Grove Drive. So one connection is, it's west of the Forest Grove Schoolhouse structure, just northeast of the Criswell intersection. And the other connection will be north of the Pleasant Valley School District property on Wells Ferry Road. In addition to the required sidewalks throughout the subdivision, a trail connection to the Pleasant Valley School property is shown between Lot ten and nine. Staff is recommending, and that's shown in the plat, but recommending that be built early on to avoid any confusion of future owners what that sidewalk exists. The school.
Hey, Taylor, Taylor, it's Roy.
Yep.
The lineup of the proposed entrance street heading north in Criswell, they're, they're offset. So do we have any issues with proximity of offset intersections like that?
I'll let Brent answer that question.
Yeah, we looked at this, Roy, very, very closely. Couple things to keep in mind. One is, to be able to completely align this with Criswell, the road would have to be half on this property, half on the adjacent. Unfortunately, that property line, which was also the city boundary, runs right down the center of Criswell. So it's impossible to build it all within their property. There's also about a twenty-foot elevation difference right at that area from Forest Grove down to the draw, so it's, it's really not a constructible area. They did move it as far east as they could, also while staying away from the schoolhouse building. The fact that it's offset, i, in this case, to the right, so I'm just gonna simplify it. When you offset intersections to the right, you don't have left-turn conflicts. If it was actually west of there, you'd have left-turn conflicts. That's usually what we're worried about. In this case, you have plenty of site distance between them. So while not ideal, it, it still does meet our separation. And long-term, we are gonna have to, once we rebuild Criswell, that intersection will most likely end up as a roundabout.
That's my next question. Yep, good.
Which could give us a chance to realign this and reconstruct a small portion of it and come in at an angle, which we could do at a roundabout. We can't do that at a T-intersection right now.
No, makes sense, all right, yeah, I think that would be a great idea. You look at school buses in the future and those kind of things, and you pull out and you gotta immediately maybe turn left to go south on Criswell, or you're gonna turn onto Forest off of Criswell, then you gotta stop and make a, a left there and all that. It just, it looks cumbersome, but I love the idea of a future roundabout.
Yes, sir. Thanks for that, Roy. So yeah, this is the, just looking at the south half of the subdivision. And then regarding Criswell, or sorry, regarding Forest Grove Drive and Wells Ferry Road, right now, it is, it's got ditch drainage, so no sidewalks, sidewalk improvements are being required right now. That's typical what we see on Criswell and west on Forest Grove Drive as well. Looking at the north half and some other notes on the subdivision as a whole. The development will be served by the Spencer Creek Lift Station, currently under construction, and that is shown on Lot fifty of the subdivision. So Lot fifty is actually a rectangle of the area of the lift station, and then it contains the whole access tract that goes all the, so the access road is contained within that, going all the way east to Wells Ferry Road. The residential development reserves multiple outlots for stormwater detention and drainage. And they're shown throughout. I will note, phase one of the construction is proposed to be submitted as a final plat, and that is outlined in red. Due to the number of lots, a Timber Ridge Lane connection to Wells Ferry Road will be required as a temporary fire access. So that's just reiterate, reiterating that this road will have to be built, even if that's all still undeveloped, because we need two access points into this based on the number of lots. Okay. Wanted to note, on the floodplain, there's, Spencer Creek does flow through this subdivision. Outlet F on the plat contains the Spencer Creek Regulatory Floodway. Just wanted to reiterate that no alterations to this area can occur without prior FEMA, DNR approval and local approval. And then, local floodplain development permits are required for additional work in the floodplain, if not already permitted through their grading process. Staff contends the proposed preliminary plat meets city standards and code requirements, and staff recommends approval of Case twenty-five nineteen, preliminary plat for Blackstone addition. I can take any questions.
Thank you, Taylor. Any questions in the commission? I guess I have one for Matt. Are we, how close are we to having too many lots on the Timber Ridge Lane? For fire purposes?
I think you would have to be over a hundred.
Oh, okay.
You know, was when, when we'd start really worrying. They did require two dedicated at all times. They're gonna provide two right away. For us, we'll get the one off of Forest Grove and one off Wells Ferry, so we're, we're more than comfortable with.
Excuse me, what was your question?
Concerned actually with the number of lots on Timber Ridge Lane, just to, it would just be to the east, my direction's right here, west of Black Hawk Dr, Black Oak Drive, where you're just going into a cul-de-sac.
Oh, you're talking about all over here.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not talking about the whole thing, just, just to the west of Black Oak Drive.
So the, the limit, limiting factor is thirty lots?
Thirty lots.
And that's, that's what you're looking for?
Yep.
I thirty or.
I should have been more clear.
Required two immediately, I mean, and then you could build up to a hundred if you, you know, depending on what you did.
And they're gonna keep a dual access throughout construction, so we'll be able to get fire EMS inspectors to the property on appropriate road-type surfaces. They won't necessarily be the final road, but we're gonna have that dedicated for us.
And there'll be parking available on both sides of that street?
Yes.
No restrictions?
Yeah, everything's thirty-one foot there. So what you might be thinking of, Scott, is it's been a while since we've had a subdivision that had something, a cul-de-sac probably this long. We previously had a six-hundred-foot max cul-de-sac length that was in city code that we used to, that was really geared towards fire protection. It really had nothing to do with public works, it was fire protection, so you'd limit the number of lots. Kind of moved away from trying to, to assume that that length will cover that, and now just do it on a lot-by-lot basis, because the lots, a lot of times are getting smaller, so you can get more in there. Now, the, the last one, we talked about this at staff, was the Woodlands has a long cul-de-sac that runs up to the west side there, and that one has kind of a, a unique double entrance with a, with a boulevard there in case there was ever a, a situation where you had to get a second access. But that, that thirty lot is what we're focusing on now.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Anyone in the audience wish to address us on this issue? Nope? All right, any further comments? Questions? Motion?
So move.
Go ahead. I make a motion that we approve Case twenty-five, twenty-five dash zero-one-nine preliminary plat, subject to staff recommendations.
I'll second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries.
Okay, moving along. Number eight on our agenda, Case twenty-five thirteen, so another preliminary plat for Ridge Haven subdivision. Applicant is Adam Sykes, doing business is Pheasant Creek Estates LLC. Request is for a preliminary plat for a twenty-seven lot residential subdivision. This is located just north of Crow Creek Road by Pleasant View Elementary. The property was rezoned in twenty-twenty-four from, to R two, Case twenty-four zero-zero-nine. The future land use map designates this area as neighborhood light with some greenways in the floodplain. The zoning is R two, as mentioned, a single-family residence district, so this is. The zoning is R two, as mentioned, a single-family residence district, so this is a compatible district. And the proposed lots and uses are compatible in this district. The rezoning, the concept submitted at rezoning is shown before you. This is very similar to what is being proposed for the preliminary plat. I will note, there are four more lots on the preliminary plat. This is due to the acquisition of additional property in this corner here. So a lot for some new geometry and design. Preliminary plat, the lot sizes range from just under point four acres to almost point eight acres. Most lots will be walkouts, which is compatible to the existing topography. Like a ridge line here with wooded areas on both east and west of the proposed road. One road, Ridge Haven Road, is serving the development. Future development to the north would extend this road and connect Winfield Court. So going back to our aerial, it's not even on the aerial, but Winfield Court is somewhere over here. So this is kind of the future design concept for development in this area. Stormwater is attained in three areas. I say areas, there are three ponds, which are to be maintained by the homeowners' association, as proposed in the plat notes. There is one out, one outlot, which is really just a remnant lot that has a lot of floodplain topography. It does have legal access right now, but I believe it's the intention of a developer to find a adjacent landowner for that, and that's outlot A. The engineering staff has worked with the developer quite in-depth on the approach. So it is connecting to Crow Creek Road, but the, there's significant topography for that road going north. So that's why you see that curve. But the radii and all the, the grade have all been reviewed and deemed meet our code. Staff contends the proposed preliminary plat meets city standards and code requirements, and recommends approval of case twenty-five thirteen preliminary plat for Ridge Haven subdivision, and I can take any questions.
Great. Any questions from the commission?
I just have one minor question. So we, we looked at this when we rezoned, and now there are four more lots. So what, which are those four lots, Taylor?
So if you look at, I mean, there, this is the area, if you notice that angle here. And then you're going here, so that was allowed for a lot of lot line changes.
Yep, that makes sense. All right, thank you.
Okay. Anyone in the audience wish to address us on this issue? Roy, did you have anything?
No, I'm good. Thank you.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I'll move for approval of case number twenty-five dash zero one three preliminary plat, subject to staff recommendations. A second.
Go ahead.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, same sign. Motion carries.
It's okay if I begin, Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Okay. This is case twenty-five zero fifteen. It's for thirty-three forty-six Town Point Drive, which is west of Town Point Drive, south of Town Point Center, which is a private drive, and north of Belmont Road. This is essentially it here. You can see Devil's Glen Road here, Belmont, and then Town Point Drive, and essentially these two lots here, which is lot two of the seventh addition of Crown, Crown Point Seventh Edition and lot two, Crown Point Fourth Edition. Both of these are in community commercial and use designation, and you can see that that's pretty much predominantly surrounding this site. C-two community commercial district zoning is prevalent throughout the site. There's some C-three over here to the north and east, and then the planned unit development area is further to the north. That is, those are basically the only differences in the zoning classes. Under the future land use and comprehensive plan, goal for providing housing, and that is expanding housing choices and strengthening neighborhoods, is provided within the design here, as proposed as multifamily. Lot configuration, the original plat was for this area where lots two and three of the fourth edition. Eventually, this was replatted, lots three and four, and a piece was left out as a remnant. At this time, Town Point Drive was also platted. This easement area here, which was unnamed at the time for access and utilities, is serving now basically as an access for many of the lots that are bordering it. And that is Town Point Center, as it was later named at the request of some of the people who are property owners in this area. Outlot A up here is going to be used for stormwater detention, as it is for the entirety of this subdivision, whatever is left over in the fourth edition. And what we have for lot two here, which is a portion of this site on Crown Point Seventh Edition, this is a replating, as I mentioned earlier, lots three and four on Crown Point Fourth Edition. Plat submittal on a future date will be required to remove this utility easement on the east side of lot two, and then there will be, as part of the two-lot subdivision, a requirement that a sanitary sewer easement will be added as part of lot two, Crown Point Fourth Edition. What we have for this site development is approximately two joint lots that are fifty-one thousand two hundred thirty-five square feet. And those lots being coupled are going to provide space for twenty-five multifamily units. There will be one building that will have a seven-unit configuration, and then the other building will have a six-unit configuration. The, essentially, when you have one lot with these structures, even though the townhouse element is what it looks like, this is all on one lot, and there is no extra ground outside of the building structure itself that is being shown. So technically, it sort of falls into the multifamily category as opposed to the townhouse category, and there are a number of municipalities in Iowa that recognize that distinction. Thirty-four units could have been built under this proposal. Twenty-five are proposed. The minimum amount of square footage for lot area allocated to each unit is fifteen hundred square feet. There's two thousand forty-nine square feet allocated per each unit based on the fifty-one thousand square feet square footage. Essentially, on the thoroughfare plan and access, this area here is the site, and as you can see, it's the, as it's been referred to, the golden triangle, Devil's Glen Road here, Middle Road here, access by Belmont up through Town Point Drive, and then, of course, the private drive here, Town Point Center coming through. And then you have, that again is already delineated here is Town Point Center. This is a closer view, and then Town Point Drive. The utilities are laid out in such a manner, there are already utilities have been staged in when this is already platted about twenty years ago. Water supply will come from the east side of Town Point Drive. We have sanitary sewer that will come from the north and through this utility access easement. At some point, there will be an additional easement added for additional sanitary as needed. Electrical service comes from the east and the south, and then gas and telecommunications provisions will come from the north. The site here, as we see, is already laid out with what would be called four-foot-wide sidewalks throughout. On this north side, we're not going to require that, because this area here is somewhat lightly traveled, and this sidewalk will suffice. What we will provide, though, or I should say have the developer provide, is this connection here. This sidewalk should be continued along the east boundary of the site, and then there will be connectivity here, ADA-compliant connectivity with ADA pads on either side, and then a crosswalk that will connect over here to the east side of Town Point Drive on the fairway side of the road. Right now, the way it's staged, there are a hundred parking spaces potentially available, as there are supposedly going to be two spots here in front, and then two in each of these interior structures. So for each unit, you'll be two interior parking spaces and then two exterior. Fifty parking spaces is all that is required, however, for this development. So it's somewhat overparked when you look at it. And the stormwater detention, as mentioned earlier, will be provided in outlot A of the Crown Point Fourth Edition. And the stormwater infrastructure is already in place to accommodate conveyance of the water from this location to outlot A. We've already got tree crown requirements already being met here with four trees along the perimeter of Town Point Drive. There will be two trees in the interior for vehicular use area. Premises is essentially what is provided. There is no buffer yard required in this area, as everything is very similar. And then lighting, once provided within the boundaries here, shall be required to be downcast. Staff, in reviewing the proposal, recommends approval, because we feel it meets the housing and expanding housing choices and strengthening neighborhoods provision within the comp plan. We would add, though, conditions, again, of no planting tree factors and any easements, and there are a grand number of easements throughout this locale. ADA compliance, again, on the sidewalk crossing, so that the pads are in the correct area, and as well that the crosswalk meets all ADA-compliant standards. That the utility easement be abandoned on lot two, Crown Point Seventh Edition, and that the sanitary sewer easement be placed on any replating. These are essentially going to be plats of survey that will be submitted prior to the issuance of any building permits. So it's going to be somewhat of a simple plating, if you will. And that will have to occur prior to the issuing of building permits. And given that, I would ask, are there any questions?
Thank you. Anyone in the commission have any questions?
I have a couple of questions.
Fire away.
Greg, we've referred to the Town Point Center Road as a private drive. So was that created to city standards for a street?
I'll let our city engineer address that.
That absolutely was not. If you driven down it, you can tell.
I have driven down it.
In really rough shape. The owners have tried to keep up with it, but obviously, they're, they're property owners, they're business owners. They're not a city. So we are working with both the developer and the adjacent property owners to hopefully get them to come in under our private roads policy. So, so we do have a policy to potentially bring in private roads as city streets. Now, there's usually a financial commitment by the property owners. It's, there's various options, but generally speaking, it's fifty percent of the cost of what that street would cost to completely rebuild to city standard. The developer has actually committed to a pretty hefty portion of that. So we're currently working with, we've met with and continue to work with the adjacent property owners. I, I feel like we're gonna get this one done. Really do. They, I think they, especially with them being business owners as opposed to residents, you know, they understand the, the economics of it a little better and the potential that they could have a one-time payment, get that off their books. Otherwise, that's on them in perpetuity. The replacement and maintenance, and seeing the, the kind of shape it's in, I, I feel like it's, it's gonna get done.
Okay.
I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
If we did that, we wouldn't, we wouldn't widen it. We wouldn't constrain the property, if you know what I'm saying. So we wouldn't make it a wider road. It would stay the width it is, function the way it functions, but it would be harsh to maintain the surface and plow it and all that.
Yeah, it would have, you know, drainable base and drain tile, and, you know, right now, it's probably built on dirt, most likely, maybe just a little bit of rock.
So how's that bringing it to city standard if you're not increasing the width?
So, so city standard is really more the, the thickness and the base than the width, because we've got varying widths all over the, the city. We've, can go down to twenty-seven feet, used to be our standard. There are some twenty-nines, there's thirty-ones. So the fact that this is fully built out, and we don't have a way to get any more right-of-way to put a wider. So city standard really would just mean it's six-inch concrete, it's got drainable base. You know, we, there's some storm sewer work that's needing to be done in there. The policy itself, probably giving you more information than you want here, has kind of struggled to, to get off, get off the ground. We've had maybe a half dozen streets in the, almost ten years that have been here, and we've never had one make it all the way through. And so a lot of it's financial, a lot of it is the definition of what city standard is. We've, we've gone back and forth with that, and we're trying to work some hybrid situations, knowing that it's in everybody's best interest for us to own it. At the same time, we can't just, without any type of financial contribution, go and take them over.
All right. So as a city?
No, so right, as of right now, it, it can stay private. Yes.
But we have to, if it brings up, you bring it up to these standards, then we'll plow it as a city, we'll maintain it.
Yep, we'll work it into a CIP project to, to do the replacement.
Go ahead, Roy.
Yeah, sorry for stepping on you there. So today, as it is, the city doesn't plow that at all, then?
Correct.
And what standard, Brent, is it maintained to today, and who polices that? Is that the Owners Association that, from the peers, as far as, oh, hey, we got potholes, we gotta fix it, or it's kind of up to that group?
It, it is. I can tell you, I have contacted one of the property owners that's kind of become the, the de facto contact person there at least twice in the last six years to get some patching done, because it had completely collapsed. And, and he's done so. You can see, there's, there's been patching done. He's just fighting an uphill battle on, on the street, unfortunately.
Yeah, no, it's right, right thing to do and asked for, makes sense for everybody. Want the businesses to thrive, so, you know, like that. Hey, regarding the tree caliper, my history tells me we've had some issues with this developer in putting in very small trees and things. Do we have a caliper requirement on what goes in as far as trees?
We, we've tried to work, Mr. Chairman, with what we understand from certain people who are more astute on the tree calipers, and we talk with some people who provide landscaping as a business, that the smaller the caliper on the two-inch, the faster that tree will grow and be less stressed for need of water. So the larger the caliper the tree is, it doesn't grow at the same rate when it's planted as a smaller caliper tree, and it requires more water and more maintenance. So that's why sort of a two-inch caliper is what would be recommended for most trees.
Okay. Will that be required? I'm just, I'm going back to one development on Fifty-third, where maybe one-inch or three-quarter inch willows were planted to meet a tree requirement, and it did not work out well.
Yeah, I mean, we, we wanna, we, we look at what is provided on the landscape plan, and then also in the field, too. We can make, you know, that type of a call, whether or not it meets our standards.
Okay, thank you.
I'm curious, just because I don't know much about the landscaping standards. What, what are they? Like, how do you determine this massive, or this, you know, this sizable development, not massive, but, and four trees?
There's calculations, there's formulas for square footage of what is required based on the parking lot size, and based on the amount of frontage and the depth that is required along streets, and then also if there's a buffer yard required based on zoning class separation requirements. So those odds all figured in, and then there are certain species that are encouraged to be planted, and there are others that are outrightly sort of on a prohibited list. But that's how they, we arrive at this with the developers.
And a shameless plug, we are gonna get to dive into that in a couple of weeks, as we go through our zoning ordinance, because we do think our landscaping plan needs some attention.
Super nerdy that I'm excited about that.
Would it be safe to say that the reason this is only four trees is because of the current zoning here? If this was?
Yes, if, if it was different zoning to the east, we'll say in this regard, and it was, let's say, residential, then you would kick in a different requirement for depth than you have here, and
This is more commercial, so.
Yes.
Up to commercial, so less buffering necessary. Also, when you have easements, utility easements and such, they trump the zoning ordinance, because you can't plant in them, and you can't make them put a tree on his roof, you know, so it's you kind of get, have to be creative sometimes.
I have one more question, Greg. I think it was the slide you showed us that was about utilities. It gave me the impression there was possibly some kind of egress into that lot to the south.
This is, this is a means of coming in Town Point, up at Town Point Drive, and then this is Town Point Center right here to the north. That's the only means of gaining access to this parcel.
Okay, so there won't be any connectivity to that lot to the south?
No, no.
Okay.
Yeah, I, I think what you might have been referring to, and there's an existing, so this is actually two lots that they're building across. There's an existing utility easement that runs the length of the property north south on that property line, but that's being vacated. There's nothing in there. being vacated, there's nothing in there.
Just back to the road question, if for some reason you couldn't come to terms and get that road taken care of, would that impact this recommendation?
No. We would just be leaning on the property owners probably much more frequently and to a greater degree to make sure that the improvements get done.
I also noticed that it meets the minimum for parking. Is there any concern for overflow on that small road or to the neighboring businesses?
We just talked a lot about the parking, there are actually two cars, not one-car garage. When we first brought this case in, we thought they were one-car garages, but they're two-cars. So there's two cars inside.
And space for two out?
And two outside.
Okay, because I think it says one in and one out. So that is a lot better, actually.
So that's an update to the written report that was corrected in the presentation today, I apologize for that.
Oh, yeah, my apologies, I didn't get to my email this afternoon, so.
I don't think I got it out. I made a couple of phone calls and I got it out.
Okay.
I had three interviews to be in.
Okay, like, sorry if I missed that. That does help a lot, thank you.
Yeah, so they are two-car, if you're like me, you're two-cars or one-car, so that's another story.
Since you've stated that a hundred spots really is excess compared to what you would expect there to be in need, and I think nationally, there's a desire to lower spots because you look at other types of transportation, why not push for more green space and less asphalt?
Well, there isn't per se a requirement to do that. There's also the aspect to this that if someone were to have people over to their place, that then that, we've run into the problem before where there isn't enough parking in these similar type developments. So we're trying to balance that with trying to keep people out of the private drive area, which is not that wide, and then also make sure that people are not parking in Town Point Drive. You know, we're trying to balance that. It's not, there's no requirement that he provide that extra green space per se like that.
Commissioner Skate, we actually have suggested that on other projects. This lot is so constrained because it's such a small lot, he has to have double-wide driveways for every driveway. So the places to find other green space on this bigger project don't really, aren't evident, but we agree, and we have worked on that with other projects, and again, something we want to work on in our zoning code as well.
As Greg said, we would not want any cars out on that street.
Yeah, good point.
And I'm sure...
Well, that in general is really underparked right now. There's, when we put in that, or that large apartment building was put in, and I don't know if it's kids that are going, students at the university or the junior college over there or what, but on a regular basis, cars are parked all over the street. One guy parks his semi there every weekend. There is not sufficient parking in that area for the respective businesses and residences today, so I'm really thrilled to see that they're going to be overparked in this case because in that general area, restaurants, everything else, they're all fighting for pace, and if you look at the aerial, there's actually people parking on grass and/or gravel to find places to park. And also no alternative means for transportation there, but I like your idea.
I'm also for green space, but I would say the market is showing people are, at least certain generations currently are more led toward location than green space, and they don't want green space anyway, they don't want to do the upkeep. So it probably works.
Again, generationally, I mean, this feels like ten pounds in a five-pound space.
Always.
But again, do people care?
Well, and I thought the same thing when I looked at this, but that's hard to push that argument when it says thirty-four units could be created there, and I think twenty-five looks really tight, so I guess be careful what you wish for.
Exactly.
I'm also pleased it has some architectural interests. I like the way they drew it.
Okay, any other commissioners with questions, concerns, comments?
No.
Anyone in the audience wish to address this? No? Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve case number twenty-five dash zero-one-five, subject to any staff recommendations.
Second?
I'll second.
I'll third.
And one.
All right, we have a motion, motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Same sign, oppose, same sign, motion carries. All right, on to zoning ordinance updates.
Our favorite sub.
This is just going to be a quick sneak peek tonight, just kind of a preview.
Just a tease.
Yeah, just a tease, more to come, stay tuned.
We'll be short tonight. We've had a...
You have five minutes. No, I'm just kidding. You can have six.
You're tough, man.
Okay. So I sent out on, to the commission on Monday, I believe, a updated, very draft permitted
use table that contains all of these zoning districts that we were discussing at some previous meetings, and it also includes the updated uses, use types, that we've also discussed, and we are going to provide you with that. We're not going to dive into the nitty-gritty details tonight, so we'll provide you with that because you really need all those things to kind of analyze this. But this is what it looks like. This is what we're talking about when, at least for the Euclidian sections, it also has some DCA, more of our form-based sections. And what, when we talk about moving some permitted uses to other districts, you can kind of see how the intensity or different impactful uses are kind of moved around. Tried to highlight the new districts and/or the one combined district that we have. So I guess really, there's a lot here. But, I don't know, Mark, how do we, how do you want to?
This is the thought exercise I would ask you to go through. So remember I've said a couple of times, zoning is at its base, it's zoning districts matched with uses. You have a table now that gives you all the zoning districts that we're proposing, new and old, and all the uses, new and old, that we have. I would, I would suggest that you go, without even looking at the definitions, just go through this at your coffee table, and when you come to a use in a district and it makes you go, hmm, circle it. And then give us that feedback, and let us say, did we make a mistake? Do we need to work on our definition? Or is it correct, and we do explain why we think it's correct?
I'm so glad you guys are doing this.
That, so that, so that you could give us your first impression, and then it might be, oh, the definition makes it make sense, or it might be, that's a new use and that's why it's there. Taylor's done a lot of work to kind of color-code, red peas are new uses, the new zoning districts have different colors as well. I think it would be arduous for us here and you to go through this tonight, but I would suggest that you can, in fifteen minutes, seriously, scroll through these tables, you're familiar enough with this stuff to know what, like, you would go, that doesn't make sense to me, Mark, why would you have urban farming in industrial, I don't know, whatever it might say, whatever it might be? And where you pause, circle it, and then give us that feedback. That's a super easy task, and it would help us a lot, because there could be mistakes.
And I'll note, the uses were really a lot of origin from Comet to, from city staff to RDG, our consultant on this project, through the comp plan and then through kind of our zoning code reorganization. They did a lot of, they've worked in a lot of cities, different states, of course, so they, their staff compiled us, there's more uses, I'll be frank. And that's not always a good thing, so there might be some questions of, do we actually need to, you know, regulate that use, or is that, you know, is that needed? So overcomplicates our code, there's benefit, there's pros and cons to having a definition for every, you know, type of restaurant and every type of, you know, a small, medium, or large bed and breakfasts and et cetera. So some of these are also mandated, you know, we're kind of preempted by either state code in different ways, fireworks sales, for instance, we have to permit those in commercial and industrial zoned areas now. So that's, so we want to make sure those are accurate, and we'll, of course, further on in this exercise later on this year, we'll make sure we are looking at that, and that's a yearly exercise. You might want to look at also where the P, which is permitted, versus the S, which is that special use process, maybe we don't want so many S's to kind of drive the uses to those designated districts versus kind of having a different palette of districts if you just kind of go to the Board of Adjustment. I think it's a little more predictable then of what uses are in what district. Some uses, though, you just are, it's a case-by-case basis, so that's kind of...
Can you show them all the abbreviations that you put spelled out at the bottom of the, yeah, so there's your key.
Yep, there's a key on the bottom. This is the Excel, and I did send out the Excel version, but of course, I tried to put it in a very hard-to-read, unless you zoom in. But if you can use a zoom function, and I can provide this if you guys want in different formats for different readability, let me know. Definitely can print it out in multiple pages or big pages, so let me know, everybody has a different way of looking at their, of this content, it's a lot of content, so.
Taylor, it's my quick question. So to your point about uses, so I'm, as an example, I'm looking, here's when it said maintenance facilities, then another thing says auto services. How do I differentiate the given uses, what's really behind a title, you know, so?
Well, we will, that's when we get into the use definitions, and really, after this meeting or tomorrow, we can send you, it's really the draft of that chapter, which we just highlighted the sections, the changes, and we kind of overgeneralized because we wanted to really hit on key topics, and our key topic for that chapter was, there's a lot of different definition changes and expand a more specific definition. So we'll provide that because it's, it is, but it might be useful to just kind of go more of a first read-through reaction and circle some things, and then you can dive in and say, oh, the maintenance center has more of a public uses and it has, you know, you can't be operating on vehicles and versus a, and I'm honestly not reading this from memory, so don't quote me on that. And then auto service, auto shop is actual engine work and that kind of stuff.
And we could have uses we don't need, we could have doubled up on something, you know, so that's a, mistakes.
But this is how, this is how it works, and this is just the table. So we've kind of talked about the districts, we've really, we've condensed one district, we've expanded a couple others. This will eventually translate and then to a new map, and that's will, that'll be an exercise, we'll save for another day. But if you kind of have, if that's needed, I can provide you, I mean, we have our online map that kind of helps you, like, well, where would this fit in? I can provide you, maybe like take off the residential and then just, it really, because most of these uses, most of the city, I think I've shown from previous meetings, is zoned single-family residential. So when you take that off the table and start looking at these areas, you're really talking about twenty percent or less of the acreage in the city, and remove north of eighty because it's all zoned agricultural for the most part. Then you're really looking at just some nodes that, how are we orienting these different uses together? And it might, that might help, kind of help guide you with the use definitions, this table, and a map that you can draw with TransOne or something, yeah.
I was going to say, like, what if you're creating a multi-use building, you know, that has several of these things in it?
So we have...
How do you figure out where it fits?
So right now, there is a mixed use type. In this Euclidian zone, we have a couple of options. If it's a larger development, we really want, push you towards that, our DCA, and we are, I believe, going to propose amending that so it's down to a smaller acreage. But if we're just talking about one building, you typically have a principal use and accessory uses. So often, a restaurant is the principal use, and the bar would be more of like an accessory or of that, and you determine that on sales. Or patio is accessory, you can't just have an, I mean, I guess you could have an outdoor patio that's the principal use, but there's, that's determination, that's kind of the, how you go about determining these mixed uses. But when it's maybe even, we want to encourage those mixed uses, so I think that was evident by comments made at the last meeting, so maybe we need to address that, those, the mixture of uses a little more with a little more intent, and that hasn't been reflected in this yet, so we're working on that. We're trying to take comments and feed it in, and trying to give you material to give us feedback. This is a evolving input, feedback, feedback loop, so we're trying to get as much feedback as possible.
And usually those we're hitting, as we've talked about, those type of projects we're hitting in C2, because it was kind of the kitchen sink of zoning for Bettendorf. And so if you had a multifamily building up top, office and retail on the bottom was going to show up in C2 or C3 or something, you know, we're kind of just, we think we've, we think we've got a structure here that's going to parse that off a little bit and kind of get rid of that kitchen sink approach to C2, and...
Give it more definition, you mean?
Yeah, when, so when you, so when you look through the code, you'll start to kind of see some patterns here. When you look through the, I'm sorry, the table, you'll see those patterns. But again, super easy, go through it, if it makes you go, why would that be there? Circle it, give it to Taylor, give it to me, give it to Greg, whatever. That'll be, that'll be super helpful to us.
And that's all I have.
Thank you.
Good.
Thanks for your work.
Appreciate all the work.
All right. More work for next month.
Different colors, so.
And one more note, though, we didn't touch overlay districts, that's going to be a whole nother, kind of on the table, in our downtown district, so we'll say that for later. Overlay districts, currently have a downtown overlay district, and we have a Utica overlay district, so those are districts on top of districts. So we're still contemplating the, do we keep the overlay district downtown or just turn that into its own zoning district that's a little more, a little more transparent and can be used with the downtown master plan? And there's still contemplation, consideration, I should say, of an I-80 middle-road overlay district, kind of by our betplex, but further to come on that this summer.
Okay.
Okay.
We good for now, then?
We're good for now.
All right. Meeting adjourned.
Thank you.